Before we get the meeting starting, I just want everybody to know that Pat and I have our radios on because we have a confirmed structure fire 26 Maiden Lane. With a 200 pound, Mr. Lombardi, you want to talk about it real quick before we get going?
Yeah, it's a 40 by 40 structure, residential structure. Gas tank attached to the building which blevied. Firemen were able to count and get everyone out of the house and we're proceeding with knocking down the fire now.
So we're just listening and monitoring. Keep our firefighters safe. Alright, let's call this meeting to order. 7:02. Rory, we're still waiting for the Seymour Student Council, correct?
Correct. I also noticed that town council is not present.
Town Council's present. Brian's here.
Oh, I'm here Rory. Sorry, Brian.
You gotta wear a bright or lime green tie. Get some neon green.
That tie's perfect, Brian. Don't let him talk. That tie is perfect. It's the right time of year to be wearing that tie.
Thank you. Given the holiday eve, we are celebrating this evening. I thought it was appropriate for Irish Americans in Seymour.
Thank you, Brian.
Have we received any public comment, Rory?
We have not.
The minutes for the March 2nd, 2021 regular meeting.
So move.
Motion by Bob Finley, second by Alberto. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Motion here. Oh, sorry, Ms. Lombardi, go ahead.
Yeah. I make a minor correction on page eight under selectmen's public comment. Under my comments. It would be the last bullet point. The senator's name is Winfield, W E I N F I E L D. He is proposing, not opposing, opposing. So if the minutes of tonight's proceedings could reflect those corrections, I would appreciate it.
We reflect the changes. Bob, will you still set for a motion for the reflecting the changes in the?
Yeah. So move.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with the changes 6:00.
Thank you.
You're welcome. First, select woman's report. It's short but long, if that makes any sense. Last week, I presented my budget to the Board of Finance. I'm happy to state that the budget I presented drops the current mill rate from 36 to 34.75 with an overall tax increase of 1.8. This is due to the contract obligations and utility costs. The Board of Finance has started budget deliberations. The deliberations are held on Mondays and Wednesday nights. There will be one tomorrow night, Wednesday, March 17, 2021. Interested, Rory can get you the link to that. The Board of Finance will be meeting with the Board of Ed tomorrow night. If anybody's interested in that. This coming meeting has been canceled. The meeting deliberations will be found, schedule will be found on the town website once Rory gets that put up. Speaking of the town website, the town website went live last Friday. Town departments have been instructed to go through the website and let Rory know if something needs to be updated or is missing. The website, it needs a lot of work done to it. Rory has gone through it and has found a couple of issues with it, so he's working on it. Rory has been doing a great job with keeping up with them and making the changes, but there's still work to be done. But just getting us to the next level with the website is the next step. Another department news, the Department of Public Works is starting to prepare for spring. I want to thank Tony and the department for all their hard work this weekend, this winter. They were hit with storm after storm and it was not, if it was not snowing, then it was ice. The department did a wonderful job in keeping the roads clean and clear, no matter what time of the day it was. The department is starting to take call for bulk season pickup. Bulk pickup runs from April through October. Residents are reminded, please call the town hall to have it scheduled by appointment. The initial pickup is free and then after that, the town will be charging. Please check the website to see what can and cannot be picked up. The community center is now open for limited in-person classes. The classes are being held virtual as well for those that cannot join due to the restriction in size classes or still want to stay home. AARP is offering tax services as well. Please call the community center for more details. Vaccinations are still going strong at the community center. Last week, in the Department of Health administered 293 vaccinations to teachers, volunteer firefighters, police department, and library personnel. We're hoping to schedule public works next as they are starting bulk pickup soon and will be coming in contact with items from residents' homes. If residents wish to receive the Corona vaccination, they need to register the VAM system, enter information and zip code. The VAM systems will tell you the nearest locations and any available availabilities they may have. We advise to continue to check out a daily basis as openings do occur. The town does not control who or when a vaccination is given. As you know, we must follow the state guidelines as to what age brackets and professions are able to receive the vaccination. The town is providing the building to the Department of Health. Doug Thomas has filed the annual audit to the state as required. Last week, I took part in the busy reading for busy bungee bees. I read to Ms. Tramello's first grade class. I also had an opportunity to attend a BZOOM, the South Central Regional Water Authority meeting. As you may know or not know, Connecticut wasn't a drought condition. Regional water reservoirs were below historical averages. Fortunately, the drought condition has been lifted in Connecticut. Regional Water Authority reservoirs are currently above their long-term average capacity for this time of the year, which is great. However, weather conditions, warmer months, and consumer use all play factors into that. We must continue to watch our consumption of water. The Regional Water Authority will be launching a new design of their water bill. The new design will make it easier for residents to view their water bills. And it's also going to have a graph on there for a year-long tracking, so you can see where, how much water you consume last year to work, how much water you're consuming this year. They're doing this bill so that in 2022, they're going to be sending out monthly bills instead of quarterly bills. So you, and that's a good way because you can see if, you know, one month you're high up in usage and you can figure out why. And if you didn't use a lot of water, then you say, is there a leak or something? And they can come in and look at it that way. So I think that's a good idea. Also in Seymour, the Regional Water Authority will be working on clearing and tree removal of the peat swamp, middle reservoir and filter pond. The work is part of the Regional Water Authority's protection and maintenance protocols that they conducted for 27,000 acres for open space that they own and manage. They also put in a pipe safe protection program to customers. This provides protection for water service lines as well as sewer and septic lines and in-home plumbing. Most of these repairs are not covered by homeowners insurance. The Regional Water Authority ensures these repairs are taken care of quickly and by qualified professionals. The pipe safe program venues also enables them to offset water rate increases. For more information on that, you can visit their website. They also offer a lot of outdoor activities. They have hiking paths that you go through. They have butterfly release programs, a lot of nature courses they offer. You can go right onto the Regional Water Authority website and just take whatever they're offering that month and you can go. Most of the time it's free. And that concludes my long but short for selectman's report. Any questions? Rory, did the student council come on yet?
I don't see anybody here.
Okay. So then we'll go to item number seven, discussion and take possible action regarding mailbox at 13 J Lane. Is that resident on?
I do not see him either.
Oh, hold on, that's Zach texting me now. You didn't send them the link, he says. Yeah, you did.
Yeah, I thought I copied you on it. I will double check.
Alright. Then we'll take discussion, possible action regarding Chapel LaPresty Solar Project. Rory can give detail on that. Right, tonight is just to move forward with the plan, but Rory, go ahead.
Sure. So I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of you about this project and some of you. So if you'll just give me a moment, I sent out to all of you earlier today, a couple of documents that I hope will have answered some of your questions, but I know one of them is a little bit confusing, so I want to go through it with you guys. Just gonna share my screen. Okay, so can you all see the PDF? Alright, so the first thing is, there were some questions about where the array would be located and what it would look like. So you can see this is the array in the red polygon here in the, in an overlay of the parcel lines in the area. And so you can see beneath it, the red area is approximately 7.5 acres. And the array itself would be about 4.5. And the reason that the red area is large, much larger than the array is that because of the tree line and the topography, they'll have to cut down some more trees in order to ensure that the panels get the necessary sunlight. And so I hope that answers questions that you would have about the layout. The next item is just a little bit of financial information to show why we are supporting this project. So what you see in front of you right now represents the existing project and the finances of that. And so you can see in the spreadsheet on the right, there is a red box around year 19. And that represents, as you can see in the far right columns, annual cash flow and cumulative cash flow. As I've been saying about the existing project, it has about an 18-year payback period. And so year 19 is the first year that Seymour will be able to pocket the savings from the solar. Until then, we are paying off the project costs. And the various columns represent the different sources of revenue that are helping to pay for the project. The next page represents if we were to add the proposed array at Chatfield. So as you can see, the big takeaway is where the red box had been around year 19 as the first cash positive year, that goes up to 13. So as you can see, it's a much quicker payoff. So just a couple of things that I'd like to go over. The first is this project, what you're being asked to approve tonight is a development agreement. And so that is to design the array and to make applications on our behalf. One, if you can see in the box on the left, there's this box that I just highlighted, which is utilities and state grants. The overall cost of this portion of the project would be about 6 million. And they, they're anticipating about four of that to come from state grants, including a school construction grant like we've done for the high school and bungee portions of the project. If we do not get that grant, then Seymour's not obligated to pay any money and we likely would not move forward with the project. We'd at least have to come back to the board with a different proposal. So that's kind of the first triggering event. After that, you can see this column here, the fourth column is the ZREC. That's a renewable energy credit that we would be applying for. That is a fixed long-term credit, as you can see, that extends into year 15. And that is, that is, as you can see, $3 million in total for the whole project. These numbers represent Chatfield as well as the existing project. So we would apply for a ZREC. We may or may not get it. If we were to not get it, there's a marketplace that we could apply for, for renewable energy credits for three to five-year terms as opposed to the 15. We had Johnson Controls run the numbers. Even if we were to not receive anything in this ZREC column, it would still, the benefits of the project would cause the payback timeline to accelerate, not nearly as much as they do with the renewable energy credit. But we would still pay off the project quicker than if we were to not add the renewable energy credit. And it's really for that reason that we are supporting this project. The financial benefits kind of speak for themselves, but I know it's a little bit complicated, so I don't know if anybody has any questions. Chris?
Um, so we're being, you said we're being asked to approve them to design the array?
Correct.
That would fit into that red box today? Okay. Are they aware that they could be designing something with a, you know, non-100% chance of going forward?
I'm not sure I follow.
In other words, if we approve them designing this, but in two weeks we vote against this, I'm just hypothetical. They're aware of that?
Um, so, so what the agreement says is if, if signed the agreement, if we approve this agreement and we receive the school construction grant that we will be applying for, then we are either obligated to move forward with the project or pay $50,000. Bob?
So the one thing I was trying to figure out in this, and I don't see it, so the panels are going to be probably need to be replaced within that 13-year period. Is that shown here or is that just shown as running the panels out 13 years? And then the 13th year, that's when it's our obligation to replace because at some point the panels start to lose their array capabilities. So there's going to be replacement of those panels?
Eventually, yes. The, Aaron Librio from JCI is with us again tonight, so maybe he can chime in on this. But my understanding is that the lifespan of these panels is longer than 13 years, certainly.
Yeah, Rory and Bob, to answer your question, the panels have a warranty of 25 years. And there is degradation, as you alluded to, each year. That's been calculated so that it does decline in the overall financials. You're seeing a mixed bag here of not just solar. So you do get a .07 degradation that's being captured.
Okay, so that's in these numbers, that's shown.
That's correct.
Awesome.
If you look, if you look at the left-hand column, Rory, down PV depreciation, it's a yellow box there.
Yep.
Okay, that's been calculated enough.
And this is without the batteries, right? This is strictly the panels themselves here, right?
That's, that's correct. This is just the panel layout. And just to add on what Rory said, there's seven and a half acres. There, there is some wetlands on the lowest portion as you look at this that won't, you know, won't be cleared and won't be touched. And we don't certainly need the entire area. We're not, we're not, right now, we're not expecting to clear the full seven and a half acres. But we will need four and a half without shading affecting the array to be able to produce the savings.
Thank you, thank you.
Any other questions?
Rory, your question asked, what are the chances that we don't get this grant?
Um. I don't know. That's the way that the agreement is written. The situation that we don't want to find ourselves in is having, having received the grant and deciding not to move forward with the project. If we were to not receive the grant, then, you know, maybe we would return to JCI and ask them if there's some way that the numbers could work. But I can't really speak. That would be up to DAS at the state level. They're the ones who administer that grant. That would be their decision. I think we have a good chance of getting it. It's a qualifying project, but I can't say whether or not we would get it.
If we didn't, if we don't get the grant, though, I thought it was, the way I understood it, and I could have understood it wrong, if we didn't get the grant, I thought we didn't have to move forward with it.
That's correct.
Alright, so if we don't get the grant, we don't have to go move forward. So if we apply for it and we get the grant, we move forward. If we don't get the grant, we don't have to move forward.
Correct. So if we, if we receive the grant from the state, we either have to move forward with the project or pay for the cost of the design, which is $50,000. And so, you know, in approving this, essentially in order to qualify for this grant program, you have to separate the, the design and the construction. And so that's what's being done here. The design is what's being asked for tonight. But you all need to understand that if we receive the grant, either we're obligated to move forward with the project or to pay for the designer.
And Rory, it's Brian LeClaire from the Town Attorney's Office. We've reviewed this and we have a a few small changes to it, which I'll talk to you offline about, making it abundantly clear that notwithstanding anything in the agreement, nothing shall obligate the customer, the town in this case, to proceed with the project. You have that final decision on this to protect you in the event you don't get the grant money. I think that needs to be made a little clearer than it's, the way it's written in this right now, frankly.
Okay, we'll work with you and JCI. The board approves it.
Correct.
Are there any other questions? Rob Van Agan?
Yeah, just to clarify, if we don't get that grant, if I said correctly, we're still going to realize savings over time, just not as quickly. So would it stand to still move forward? Are there other avenues to look at? Was I looking in the wrong place? Or you were saying there were other programs to sell the?
The nature of this project is kind of all encompassing. We look at every building that the town owns. We look at what are conservation measures, energy conservation measures, renewable energy, obviously in the form of solar. And so I scrolled up to the second page here. You can see, this is the project as it exists currently. Solar is only part of the existing project. Solar is being added to the high school and bungee school. And in the current project, it's a 20-year contract and it starts going cash positive in year 19. So all this would do is speed up the timeline. Because solar is, you know, one of the most efficient energy conservation measures that we can use.
And that's with the grant.
Correct.
Rory, how fast would this speed it up? How many years are we talking? One, two years?
Yeah, so the page that's showing now is the existing project that's year 19. So this is with the proposed array. And there's a couple of assumptions here. This obviously assumes that we get the grant because if we don't, we're either back to the drawing board or we're not doing this at all. So that's number one. Number two, this assumes that we get this ZREC, this column that I've highlighted here. Now again, if we don't get it, we still have options. And even if we zero this column out, it still speeds up the payback process for the project. The other thing that this does not show is, as you guys may recall, we were explaining, there's two programs at the state level. One is called net metering. And this allows us, if we overproduce in the summer and underproduce in the winter, this allows us to apply credits from months where we overproduce to months where we underproduce. And the other is virtual net metering, and they're very similar names, so it's a little bit confusing. But what virtual net metering would do would be to allow us to take excess production of solar and apply the credit to other buildings. Net metering exists only on one electrical meter. Virtual net metering allows you to take a credit on one meter and apply it to a separate meter. So that is, that is not a guarantee, which is why it is not reflected in the numbers before you. If we were to be accepted into the program, which might be a year or two down the road, that would further speed up the payback time. Another thing we had discussed with JCI is, you know, as I said, there's kind of two trigger points. There's the state grant. And then the other is this ZREC application. If we were to not get the ZREC application, we could take a look at maybe resizing the array if it made financial sense to do so. You know, the benefit of the arrangement with JCI is that you know, they've taken into account already the solar degradation. They take into account a lot of things. And so they guarantee the savings that they project, provided we hit, you know, as provided we get the ZREC application and that sort of thing. So this might be updated if the circumstances change. But, you know, the financial outcomes are good. Bob Finley?
Yeah, this is more in the long-term plan here. So I'm back counting my questions before. So these have 25-year warranties on the actual panel. Year 20, or year 13, we're net positive. I'm assuming at that point, we're going to put away money over that course of time so that we can replace the panels. And this question is to Aaron, can they be replaced in sections and segments so that you can do it cost efficiently? So it's not one big lump hit? Or do you have to replace the whole array all at once? I'm guessing the section and panels would work and we would plan for that because you have to think about it long-term as you're going to replace those.
Yeah, what you're, what you're looking at here that is still on the screen is you're doing a net positive of almost $8 million over a 20-year term. So if you started to set some of that money aside to, to pull the panels, your electrical infrastructure is going to last for 50 years roughly. And so, yes, you will be able to do it in sections. The way the layouts are done is that it's not, just think of it, it's not a continual line. The, the way the layouts are done is that it's not, just think of it, it's not a continual line. There are specific breaks in the, in the arrays where you can do certain sections at a time. And so to answer that question, people often ask, well, what if the technology increases? Well, somebody like me would be back in front of you saying, look, I can swap all these panels out and produce a heck of a lot more savings than you just doing nothing. And maybe it pays for itself in five or six years as opposed to, you know, a longer term, so.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about it from a long-term planning standpoint, and then the responsibility of that. So the panel replacement at all, we would subcontract someone to do that work, because it wouldn't be a town responsibility. At some point, we'd be looking to hire somebody to do that type of work, I'm guessing, right?
Yeah, if you, if you imagine this cash flow going out to about 10 million, if you were setting some money aside, you know, in years 14 through 24, you could start piecemealing that basically out of, you know, your existing budget, if you will.
Right. Because that's what I would be looking, really, that's how we have to be thinking about that, we're going to take money from that cash positive and put it towards that, you know, what we're going to need to replace panels and ideally in a segmented manner, not so it's one big lump project.
Yeah, you know, Bob, I don't want to, like, I don't want to just, you know, confuse everybody, so I'll try to say this simply. In years 13, you know, a partnership with us, we could renegotiate another 20 years based upon the array and show you that you can monetize the future savings for another 20 years and put 10 more million dollars back into the buildings, you know, that, that you're, that you control. So I, I, yes, you can, you do that, and this certainly has the financial optics to be able to replace this and keep this, keep it, keep the generation and revenue source coming.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I'm not putting the burden on someone else longer term, right? That's, that's it. So we just got to make sure that's in the consideration. Okay, makes sense.
Yeah, and the other thing I would just add to that, Bob, is that, you know, if the, the panels have a lifespan of 25 years, I mean, 25 years ago is 1996. And so to, to think about what solar was like then and what it's like now and what advances may come along the way, you know, is difficult. But additionally, in, in a the numbers that are on this spreadsheet represent kind of a medium case scenario. So we have 13 years to make a decision, because we're not cash positive until that point. In a best-case scenario, I, I don't know, but let's say for argument's sake, it's 10 years. We still have 10 years to look ahead and make that plan. And even in a worst-case scenario where we don't get the Z rec and, you know, the, the market for renewable energy credits go away, it's not any longer than the current 18-year period. So no matter what the scenario, we have plenty of time to make that decision as we look ahead and as things evolve.
Okay, thank you, guys. Thanks.
Are there any other questions?
All right. Okay. Sorry about that. I had to get updated. Um, I did have a question on, in regards to that, and I'm sorry, is Aaron still on? I wanted to see, how would this affect any waterways?
I'm, I'm still here, yes. When you, when you say waterways, are you referring to me bringing up the wetland?
Yep, is it going to affect any waterways, is it going to affect?
No, no, we, we won't.
Hold on, because the Ansonia rejected, it was, it's the state of Connecticut rejected the Ansonias because it was going to affect water. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't do all this and then we have an issue with it affecting waterways.
Yeah, no, there's, there's a small amount of wetlands that creeps into the lower portion there. We won't be disturbing or touching that. We're not going to make any requests to go in there. There will be specific design and site work that'll be part of this, so that there is no runoff into anybody else's property. And everything will be self-contained. And that'll all be part of the design process as it goes up to the state for the review.
That was all I had. I'm sorry. Okay, so we have to take action on this. Do I have a motion to move? To have the, Rob Van Egan? Second by Bob Finley, all in favor?
Oh.
Right.
Chair votes aye. Any? Opposed? Chris, I couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me?
You froze.
Okay, I'm sorry. I oppose this, and if we're going to discuss that, Rory, none of this is new to you. But I do have grave concerns about investigating some of the impact of cutting down so many trees and the environmental impact that'll have. And until we have a sufficient answer on that, I can't support cutting down acres of forest behind the school on a downhill slope at that, so I'm worried about some of the water impact there as well. I understand the financial savings, the potential financial savings if we get approved there, this grant, that were not guaranteed for. Because of that, I choose to oppose this.
So. Five at ayes, right? Yes. Zero ups. And one, and one opposed. Five, zero, one. Okay.
Actually, five, one, zero, to be clear, I think we had. Thank you, and.
Message going through my head over here. Chris, I under, I'm just going to, Chris, I understand as an, as an, as an environmental engineer, I understand, I would, I would guess that they would put in sways that would go in. I would guess that they would also put in plantings, low-line plantings that would help with the runoff. That's something we should, that, that's something we can ask for, that's something we can see that they do.
Yeah, I just wanted, I wanted a little bit more guarantee before I started approving, voting to approve things on something like this.
I'm sorry, Rob, what did you say?
I couldn't wait to my turn, but as you say, we could create some nice program with the schools where we try to, every tree that gets taken down, replant somewhere in Seymour.
Well, what about, what about the wildlife, too? Because I'm thinking, we're, we're talking about cutting down so many trees here, plus we got the Smith Street project going out. So that's more trees getting cut down, more displaced wildlife. We're going to run into problems with that. Eventually, we're, they're running out of places to go. And I know we have the land trusts, but they're not, I don't think that's quite sufficient for these concerns. So yeah, I, I might come around on this project eventually. Rory, is everything I'm saying now, I've talked to you about on Friday? But as of right now, I can't support, but I understand that it's been made, so.
I understand, Chris, and I respect, I respect your point on that.
Yep.
It's what makes this board work so well together.
Mm-hmm.
Right. I see that we have the Seymour High School Student Council officers on. So can I have a motion to go back out of order and go to item number six, motion by Bob Finley?
Seconded.
Seconded by Patrick Lombardi. Hello, Zach Braca and the rest of the student council. Can we please see your face, faces?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Zach, if you want to introduce everybody?
Yeah, sure. So, hello, everyone. I'm very pleased to be here tonight and given the opportunity to speak on behalf of student council, the student body, and Seymour High School. So I am joined here today by the elected student council officers, my vice president, Kelty Johnson. Kelty, if you want to say.
Hi, I'm Kelty.
Kelty, secretary Kayla Coleman.
Hi, I'm Kayla.
Treasurer Tyler Brettis.
Hello.
As well as the class representatives, Amanda Curtis, who couldn't be here tonight, Michael Casanova. And.
Hey, I'm Michael.
And Jay Patel, our freshman class rep, as well as our advisor, Ms. Penna.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, welcome, everybody, and thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having us and inviting us to speak today.
Oh, no problem. Nice to see the, the younger generation, and I feel like I feel old when I say that, but the younger generation taking such an interest in local government. Um, so if you, if you have any questions for us, or you can tell us why you guys are here, give us some feedback.
Yeah, well, I wrote a little thing. Yeah. Today is important to hear from the voices driving the morale, leading events, and spreading awareness for the causes within the halls of Seymour High and throughout the valley. So first, I really just want to touch upon the accomplishments of this year. Immediately after our school-wide election, we started the process for acquiring a new rock for the senior class and future classes after us. After getting in contact with Haynes, we eventually were able to pick out the best rock for, to be placed in front of the school. So an alumni survey was sent out to gather the opinion on this endeavor, and it came back overwhelmingly, so, the majority of support. Everyone supported it majority. Several sets of past student council officers have tried to acquire this rock, but none of us succeeded until now. And I'm very proud of everyone involved in this process and thankful for both the donation of the rock, as well as the labor of the crane to get it to our school. So a couple more, quickly, I go through this, accomplishments. You know, recently, or actually a couple of months ago, we delivered coffee and donuts from Dunkin' Donuts to first responders, supporting our local police, firefighters, EMC, and Griffin. And during the pandemic, it's important to give back to the essential workers who didn't stop working despite the hard times. Another thing that we have done in February, we're also successful in our chocolate rose sale, selling well over 300 roses despite the cohort situation and distance learners not being in school to buy. To improve the pride students have in our school, we repurchased Wildcat stickers that everyone loved in previous years. We're happy to do so. In addition to that, students and staff were encouraged to wear red for, which is the blood cancer color, and donate during the month of March to raise money for the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, which was actually spearheaded by Katie Bruno, which we are so ha- happy to work with her on that. Tomorrow, we are having a greenout where students and staff will wear both, will wear green for both Mental Health Awareness Day, as well as St. Patrick's Day, and in support of the group Sandy Hook Promise. The student council advocated for the opportunities to decorate our graduation caps, and I'm happy to say also that we're going to be able to do that this year and for future years to come. And now the board of selectmen, our officers have now refocused our attention to ensure the rest, the rest of our days as seniors and other grades are, are great. So although spring is fast approaching, we still have the energy and the drive to complete our goals for the rest of the school year. So these goals have been carefully crafted in order to improve and better our school and our community. So I can go through those really quickly, if you want. I think it's great to share what we've been doing at the high school.
We're all about sharing, so go ahead.
Awesome, awesome. So supporting our class advisors, we'll be working with them on planning prom and other senior-related activities such as senior day, senior acceptance day, and a possible senior banquet. Another goal this year, or another goal this year is to acquire the resources in order to finish the mural, mural, sorry, and the sports awards and achievements hallway. We also want to clean up and refurbish our existing cool, school sign at the bottom of the hill, working with Environmental Club to dig up the weeds, plant flowers, make it look nicer, really improve the appeal of the sign at the bottom of the hill has. In anticipation to the very exciting day of April 12th, when we are all welcomed back to school full-time, we are planning a spirit week our first week back, something that hasn't been done since 2019, so are very excited to do that. And as, as well as organizing a movie night for seniors and other things to commemorate our friendships made during our time during the Seymour Public School Education System. So along with that, one more thing is that I and a couple of other people are working to create an alumni hall of fame and setting the criteria to be conducted. Lastly, one more, actually, lastly, the officer team and I have realized the need to break ground on creating a student lounge, club, and academic hub for our school. The perfect place to be this is the media center. This would be, this would serve as an area for major clubs like student council and the National Honor Society to meet, as well as an area to study, socialize, and enjoy. Student council is an organization of students that work for the general welfare of the school by promoting the school morale, spirit, cooperation between the student body, faculty, and the administration. So achieving these aspirations will be tough moving forward, definitely with the pandemic. But with the support of our town leadership, school administrators, and student council members, we can get it done. Thank you again for your time and the opportunity to speak here and ask some questions. I know the officers have some.
Very nice, Zach. Thank you. Thank you for bringing us this board as to what you guys are doing at the Seymour High School. I think it's great, all the things that you listed. Do the board of selectmen have any questions for? Pat, Mr. Lombardi?
A question, just a comment. I'd like to, first of all, thank all of you for being here tonight and sharing your thoughts with us. You're doing an excellent job. Keep your spirit up and move forward. Thank you.
Bob Finley? You're muted.
You, Bob. Thought I hit it. Just a comment, love hearing about all the things you guys are working on. It's fantastic. I, I know I can speak for myself, and I know I speak for others on the board. If you guys need any assistance in some of the projects that you guys are working on, feel free to reach out to us and the board. Anywhere we can help you guys, you know, that, I love hearing about, even just the sign thing to me, I think little things like that, it is important to do and show pride in your school and great hearing it from you guys. Thank you, guys.
Slavon Ballen?
First off, Mr. Brackett, that was a wonderful presentation. And you and everybody on your board, everybody on your student council should be proud. And I'm just glad to see everybody enjoying their high school time. It's one of those things that you really need to enjoy while you're going through it. Get everything that you can out of this and get every, maximize every experience so that you leave your impact on the school, something positive that you'll look back on when you're our age and have children of your own. So I wanted to commend everybody here for their work. Especially, you know, Mr. Patel, you're the freshman representative, I believe. So you have just so wonderful resources around you on student council to learn from. And I commend you all for coming here tonight on your off time and taking time away from your studies. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno? Did you have something?
No, just, just thank you for your time, you guys. That was a nice summary. It's nice to hear what's going on at the high school and recognizing the groups that are doing some good things there and usually I'll be proud.
Slavon Van Egan, do you have anything that's put anybody on the spot, but?
No, no, it's wonderful. As an alumni of Seymour, before it went through all its facelifts and changes, it's almost unrecognizable, but there's always been cores of really good kids there working hard, and I can see this is one of those roots, so. Thank you for putting, like we said, your time into the school, benefiting your fellow students and making the school look great. Thank you very much.
Ms. Pennha, thank you so much for being their advisor and, and leading them. It's, it's so, it's so nice and refreshing to see the younger generation. I keep saying younger generation, the younger adults wanting to take an active part, not only in their student councils and seeing what goes on in school. And it's, it's a lot more than saying, hey, let's, let's have, you know, a, a a theme for our prom, or let's have something for our homecoming. It's, it has to do with showing the kids and taking leadership, because the leadership roles today, put them into the leadership roles in college that eventually give them the leadership roles, hopefully in their community. And volunteering to be on the student council, it, it's a big responsibility, even if you're just a homeroom rep. It's showing that you take an active interest in your school, you take an active interest in what your peers and friends think and what they, they would like to see. And the only way we can move forward is, is with the young adults like you that, that want to be active. The only thing that, um, I think I can speak for all the selectmen when I say this, is to continue your role in taking a leadership role. Continue it once you get out of school, once summer comes. Get active in your community. Be active, continue to be active, because what you put into your community is what you're going to get out of your community. Just like school, what you put in is what you get out, right?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. I did see, hear you say you had an environmental group, and that's kind of, that hits home with me as a, as an environmental engineer. And just to let you know that we will be doing a, we are looking to do a Earth Day cleanup. And just to let you know that we will be doing a uh we are looking to do a Earth Day cleanup. Uh Earth Day is April twenty-fourth, but I'm looking at starting at the weekend before that and going for that whole week after it to get the cleanup, working in the downtown area around the schools and just getting a bunch of residents as well as kids together to help clean up the town. So if you you're interested, just let Rory know and we'll get you on the signup list.
That would be great. Maybe um Zach, maybe we can through student council, you know, start a signup and maybe have a group from student council and Seymour um students kind of represent Seymour High School and doing the cleanup with them.
Yep, yeah, that works great. And I think we have a couple of questions from the officers that they want to ask really quickly.
No, that's fine. And we can sign off on community hours as well if needed for uh for National Honor Society.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. And the students are always looking for those hours.
Need them. Okay, what questions do you guys have?
Um I guess I'll start. I this I kind of speak on behalf of a lot of people here, a lot of I um student athletes at least, but.
Tyler, can I ask you, can I ask you just one thing? Um when you speak, can you just say your name so that we can put it into the record? I'm sorry.
All right, Ty- uh Tyler, Tyler Brothers Treasure. Um okay, yeah, I speak on behalf of a lot of student athletes here, but the locker room situation, um it's kind of been something that every team has had to deal with, almost every team has had to deal with the past, like throughout their entire career, but just the functionality of the locker room and the cleanliness and everything about it has just been like terrible. Like, for example, I the I'll just say the this is kind of a small issue, but like the hand dryers, none of them work. I don't remember them ever working like there's a crack in the floor, just like recently I noticed there was a crack in the floor somewhere. It um and there was an ant hole coming out of it, like with like ants crawling around it through the floor. I don't even know if this is an issue that can really you guys would take on, be able to take on, but um I know in past years, I think in the during the girl season, Kelty Kelty might know, but there have been, and this is a locker room that's shared by three different teams throughout the year. Uh this it's swim locker room, track locker room, cross-country locker room. But there have been multiple uh I don't know if it was even a chemical spill, but there was just sludge or some kind of liquid coming seeping through the floor. That was a big one. And uh there's a lot more to list, but yeah, I think if that could be tackled, that would really benefit uh or like boost morale of a lot of students when it comes to using those locker rooms for athletics.
Tyler, uh this is Finley, um it has this, has this all this been raised to the ranks within the school? Has it been brought to the Board of Education? Or is this your first time that you're you're projecting all this?
Well, I think they all the issues, the major issues, they've been, I think, like quick term uh quickly patched up and fixed, but nothing is just I'm I'm not so much asking, we're not like asking for a complete renovation, but they've just been quick, easy fixes. They go away for a little bit and then a new problem pops right back up. So they have been fixed, so they've been getting through to somebody, but not really helping entirely.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say if we were to ask somebody that may have already dealt with it, I wanted to know if they've already been, you know, brought off the channel.
Excuse me, I hate to interrupt you, Rory. Um Deputy Slavvin Albrino, I am being requested to go to the structure fire down at Villa Bianca. Al, can you take over the meeting? I need to be down there.
Sure.
Thank you. Zach, I am so sorry, student council. I am so grateful to meet you. I we have a town emergency that I need to get to. I am so sorry. Ms. Pinho, it's nice meeting you.
Thank you very much. It's nice being you. Stay safe.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any other questions for um Tyler? Okay, uh we will note that Tyler, uh as you know, we're the Board of Selectmen, we're not the Board of Ed, but we're glad that you're voicing those concerns here tonight. We're gonna um have Rory Burke, who's First Select Woman Dragonis's right-hand person. He's gonna take some notes on that, too. We're gonna follow up uh with our colleagues on the Board of Education or the administration, whoever we deem appropriate. So thank you for sharing that. Is there anybody else on the student council that would like to um have sense for the board?
Yeah, I was wondering if I could ask a question?
Sure, just make sure you state your name for the record.
So I'm Caleb Pullman. I'm the secretary and um just us as officers, we were just wondering um if the board just like the stance on graduation and I even though this might not directly be through you guys, if you would support more of like a generous and open-minded one with um more people uh more similar to previous years instead of a more strict one that uh I know they've been planning just based on limiting the people that could attend?
Rob?
Hi, uh Slavvin Van Agan. You know, I can say again to echo what uh Al Bruno said before, we're not in a place where we're the ones who are going to be making any judgment on that. I think everyone here can agree that your experience has been totally different than ours and you guys have missed out on a lot of things and there is absolutely no one who doesn't recognize that. That being said, safety is always going to be the utmost. And while I think a lot of things are moving in the right direction, I I think it's safe to say everybody supports trying to get you back to normal as quickly as possible. Uh and as long as we feel we can do that safely for you, we will. But we, you know, thing like I said, things are moving in the right direction. Uh you guys weren't on, but we're talking about the vaccinations happening at the community center. So of course, we we want things to get back to normal forty as quickly as possible, but also safely as possible. So that'll be a determination that will probably happen closer to, you know, hopefully to be one of those planned for the worst, but then be able to if things are deemed that way. So I, no matter what, I you guys have been so strong getting through uh these last twelve months, missing out on the amazing experiences that, you know, I think a lot of people took for granted. So I thank you guys for being so strong through all this.
I also.
Echo, oh, go ahead, Chris.
I'm sorry, Al. Um I also want to point out, I forget exactly. I saw an alert come in today that um a European country just went back into lockdown because their cases have spiked. So we definitely understand. Trust me, you guys have been fire forges swords and you guys are a strong sword. Uh but the Board of Education has a responsibility to make sure that people are safe. So we can't um bear that in mind as they make their decision process going forward. That's all we ask.
Yeah, obviously, we all understand uh Ms. Pullman, that it's it's frustrating. Now, I'd love to see everybody back doing uh arts, sports, everybody back together and being able to gather. It's a difficult time, but knock on wood, the numbers are tracking in the right direction. Spring sports are moving forward, so let's see where it goes from there.
Um if I could just make the board uh board here aware of something, um it's Michelle Pino, the um advisor for student council. I know our administration, Mr. Freund, has been working with um, you know, our our central office, and there's several different plans in the works right now for depending on how graduation will look. Um so there's several different contingency plans in there. So it's just a matter of time as to see kind of which plan we can really go forward with. That's all.
Thank you, thank you, because I'm I'm not aware of any of the the planning stages for graduation right now either, so that's why I kept it.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's.
Immediate with sports, but yeah, I mean, I'm sure the the plans are being hatched. Uh they managed to do a graduation last year at the height of it. So that was really great. That was worked out. And you just take a look and see what other high schools across the country and the world are doing. And we we managed to do that for, you know, the the senior class last year who I just felt horrible for. What a what a difficult thing to have as a senior in high school happen. You know, we we all get it. Um but good question and thank you, um Ms. Pino, for helping me out there on that.
Of course, no problem. Thank you.
Anybody else have any other questions?
Hey, Mr. Bruno, it's Brian Leclerc. Just to so the students could learn a little of the civics as part of this discussion as well. We have something called executive orders in Connecticut because the governor's declared a public health emergency and a civil preparedness emergency. And he has powers under the Constitution of the State of Connecticut, just like we have a US Constitution, we have a Connecticut Constitution. And and he has powers under that and the laws to declare these emergencies. And he has the power to issue executive orders, and those are truly something that all municipalities have to follow. I know it can be frustrating at times. Uh but depending on what the orders are, what the capacity numbers are, and last year there were specific orders regarding graduations, what could be done and what wasn't. Uh the town and the Board of Ed has to follow those orders at all times in consultation, of course, with your local health district as well. So it's a so it's not just locally the decision is being made whether you guys can and cannot walk or how or how many people. And there are executive orders that probably will still be in place at that time governing what uh it can happen.
Thank you, Brian. Did you all know that, by the way? Because that's something that not a lot of people know. So if you learned something tonight.
To state, I might add as well, just something that happens in New York or California or Arkansas, it's going to be much different in Connecticut because it it is locally locally in the sense of state by state regulated.
It's a states' rights issue.
Just to say, do you happen to know what the current uh maximum capacity is for people outside? What it is right now allowed by the state?
Brian?
I know it's changing on what the nineteenth is changing. I think the indoor, I think indoor is going. I I forgot exactly where it is now. But um there were specific rules, though. You can't just look at the outside numbers, you know, historically, if you looked at last year, there were specific graduation protocol and graduation uh rules. You know, we we also, we have executive orders, we also have sector rules. So if you want to really research this, go online. It's called S E C T O R rules. So the the state government has come up with various sector rules for different things, for everything from youth camps to summer camps to graduations to movie theaters to everything in between. So you have to look at the executive orders, then you have to go look at the sector rules that have been adopted by the State of Connecticut in light of the executive orders and put them all together. And I don't know what's going to happen. The governor can change these. He's issued, you know, many, many executive orders so far, so we shall see what happens later this week, next week and next month. Let's just, you know, keep our fingers crossed. Everyone remains uh diligent in their safety protocols in the meantime, and hopefully with enough vaccines and people take being careful and wearing masks, we can get those restrictions lifted so you guys could have a more traditional graduation ceremony. It's everyone's goal, I think.
Any other questions?
Yeah, hi, I'm Kelty Johnson and I'm the Vice President of Student Council. And Student Council, as Student Council Vice President, we believe that the students and the hard-working students of Seymour High School deserve a place to study and kind of cool down during the day, which is what we would call a student lounge. And so we were wondering if you support converting our media center in student high in Seymour High School into a student lounge?
Anybody want to take that? Rob?
Uh yeah, unfortunately, that doesn't give us enough detail. I mean, the idea of a lounge, wonderful. I like the idea of kids being able to relax, having spaces. Uh as far as the media center itself, I then again, I a lot has changed since I was there last, so the general idea of it, yeah, the details, we don't have enough. If um and again, I'm not sure the proper channels for something like that. But I'd say your best bet would be to come up with a proposal, uh kind of options that, you know, this is our first you know, what we think would work out the best. Here's some other possibilities, what the impacts would be. And the more information you can give somebody who's you're trying to get their support with, the better. Like I said, general idea, lounge, love it, love the idea.
Yeah.
Change the media center, I don't know anything about how that works out. So if you put together a little bit more information on something like that, absolutely would help me, it helps sway someone to uh support you on that.
Yeah, just to add a little bit of detail for now, I guess. Um since my freshman year, so like three years ago, the the media center actually hasn't been used for anything.
You know why that is?
Um my freshman year, it was used kind of like a lounge where if you had like an eighty-five or higher, you could go there for your study hall. But then halfway through the year, they just got rid of that completely and just basically made it a designated area for nothing. So right now, it's kind of just sitting there, not being used for anything. And I know that kind of has to do with COVID, but at the same time, like last year and my sophomore year, so the past three years, it's really just been sitting there like occasionally a class will go in there, but that's about it.
Um can I just add just to um thanks, Kelty, but just to give some um context and understanding of some things behind the scenes. Um it's Michelle Pino again, the advisor. Um so staffing is is, you know, it's a little difficult. Unfortunately, we don't have a media specialist. Um I know it's something that goes in the budget every year, but I think it it might be something that um, you know, isn't one of the top priorities, unfortunately. But I know that Mr. Freund does put it in the budget every year, so we're hoping that next year we can get a media specialist. I know Zach, uh Mr. Freund's been in conversations with you uh as well as me of kind of his vision of how he'd like to see the media center go. Um hopefully, we can get it there and it's similar to um kind of what Kelty is expressing. Um not so much of a student lounge, but more of um kind of like a student commons. Um so I know Noggett took high school when they did their full remodel, I believe their media center is is kind of um organized in such a way that kind of provides those common areas for students, whether it's tutoring or for learning sessions, um you know, uh an area if a class needs to go down there. Um you know, having that computer, that media center area. Um you know, kind of making it, trying to make it, I think, um I think what the vision is 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 trying to make it, you know, look kind of what you would see on a college campus, right? Um with a probably minus the cafe that you would see there. Um so hopefully, you know, I I know Zach, I don't know if you want to add anything, so I know that this was something that you brought up yesterday in our student council meeting and Mr. Freund was was present at that meeting and joined um and had a conversation with the student council on it. Um so I know that there is a vision for it. Um you know, hopefully we can get there. Um you know, staffing unfortunately tends to be an issue um and trying to get that media center open full-time for students because we don't have a full-time um media specialist, so. Just so the board is aware of that, okay?
Something to the entire group before we we jump into this. So what's important that you guys recognize that as selectmen, we're we're able to help. If you want to formulate a plan or an idea, we can give you direction there. But this type of stuff probably would have to go in front of the Board of Education. Where we can help you and I and that and that's where that's where I think anyone on this board will say the same thing. Where we'll be able to help you is if you want to formulate a plan and you need assistance from someone here, we'd be more than happy to give you that direction. But the things that you're requesting of us, we really don't make that final decision. That's a Board of Education decision. So where we'd want to help you and where I'll speak to the board, because I know everyone on this board will absolutely spend any time they, you know, they they have possibly to help you guys. No different than when I mentioned to Tyler, um the same the same thing. You're bringing up this very important stuff and we want to help you and we could raise that awareness to the Board of Education, but you guys are going to have to propose that to the Board of Education and get their buy-in um as a team. So I I just want to make that clear. Al, if you want to jump in there, I I I think I'm saying it right. I I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's that's, I mean, this is kind of a lesson in how our town works, too. I'm sure you all know this. But uh we do not have any authority as a Board of Selectmen under our town ordinances and our town charter to um do things that are related to our schools. That is the Board of Ed's purview that those are their duties. And while the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, which is what we are tonight, as you know, and the Board of Ed, those are the three bigger boards in town that disseminate a lot of our fifteen million dollars worth of funding around that. We all have our own uh sections of responsibility. So while you you're more than welcome to share that tonight with us and like Mr. Finley was saying, sure, we'll we'll get behind you and support you uh and talk to our colleagues on the Board of Ed. We have, we all work together really well in this town. That's why it's it's a well-run uh machine for the most part. Mr. Miller worked very hard for on that the past ten years with his teams. And we take it very seriously, or else we wouldn't volunteer our time here tonight as as you would. And we take it very seriously or else we wouldn't volunteer our time here tonight as, as you wouldn't as students. So that, that's about it. And that's what we want to make sure you're all aware of. We appreciate your comments and like I said, we will make sure we follow up with them to our Board of Ed colleagues. So to that end, do you have anything to ask us about how the town is functioning? Anything that we can answer for you? I think Mr. Gunnis made a great comment about the Earth Day and getting your environmental group involved. And any students who want to assist, any other student groups that are relevant to that. Because I personally can tell you, I run up at the, the track when I can, when there isn't anybody up there. Since the pandemic started and I see a lot of garbage and it drives me crazy. There's water bottles left on the field. There's garbage and litter in the little pond area behind the, the track on the opposite end of where the snack shack is and the shed. And, you know, we, we can do such great things as adults and students in our town, as members of our community to clean that up. And I'm all for that because I was, I'm, I'm an environmentalist too by heart and I was raised by educators myself. And I have a lot of friends and family that are into keeping things clean and, and respecting nature and the environment. So whenever you guys want to do that, I can tell you right now, I'm in, I will volunteer as many hours as you guys need to get that cleaned up. And we look forward to that. But if there's anything else about the town and doing things like that, that are community related and what we do as a board? Does anybody have any questions?
Throw out there for Kelty and the team, if you guys need assistance in doing any type of proposal for the Board of Education with respect to, let's say, the student lounge, I'd be more than happy to help. So.
Tyler, you were going to make a comment?
Yeah. I, I. Regarding the town, yeah, and roads and whatnot. Pot, like potholes. I know I've heard of a lot of, I don't know if you deal with this, but I've heard a lot of like stories of people constantly kind of popping tires and destroying their cars just because of the amount of potholes all around town. I don't know if this is something that is in your sector, but it just seems, I know it gets worse around every winter. But is this something that you guys deal with or?
Yeah, just Tyler, just so you know, Mr. Lombardi is currently Chair of the Department of Public Works. And that's the entity that would take care of that kind of concern. So that's a great question. So even though I'm a former member of the Public Works Board, Pat is the current chairman. So I'm going to let Mr. Lombardi answer that question for you.
Okay.
Well, we do have a program in place to do pothole replacement and so on and so forth. So that, you know, residents of the community don't end up sending us bills for tire replacement, tie rods, so on and so forth. That will be started very, very shortly. You know, it's still cold out. We are able to make some hot patch ourselves. The only thing that I guess I can tell you is, is, you know, if you're here of anyone or, you know, if you're around town and you're in a particular area where you, you know, definitely see something needs attention. Please call the First Selectman's Office. They generally are the filtering point for those kind of complaints. And they are conveyed to the Public Works Director on a daily basis. We have people, various areas of the town, working on various things at times. But certainly anything such as a pothole that is really detrimental to any vehicle traffic. We would consider that an emergency and I'd jump right at it and take care of it. So I hope that answers your question.
And let's see, I couldn't see who had their hand up first. We'll go Chris and then Rob.
All right. So a couple of things that I heard that were concerns of yours within the school and just FYI, I didn't go to Seymour High School. I was on a Brian.
Chris, we're going to keep it on the potholes for now and then I'm going to let you come back and comment on that.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Comment on the potholes? Yeah, let's, and then we'll come back to that, Chris.
Yeah, I was gonna say Tyler, if you actually, this, I feel like this is the first meeting in a while where we weren't talking about the roads. If you can watch all of these, especially now that we have to do it via Zoom, you can watch all these, you can. The minutes, we have a constant ongoing program and we just went through the next phase. Because yeah, there are roads that have gone up on time and sometimes they do little patches. And we've gone through and looked at our budget and seen what roads we're actually going to do. Complete overhauls on which ones need a little bit of patching, which ones need more. So that is a whole system and you're going to see, I mean, I kind of hope that you have seen over the last couple of years. I don't know if you're driving yet, but you'll, you'll see that there's some roads that are now in better shape. They get redone. We're looking at a lot more sidewalks now. So it is an ongoing program. But as was just mentioned, when there is a specific one that creeps up a new one that somebody messes their car up. This, as soon as you tell Public Works, they're on, they try to get somebody out there. Sometimes you get nothing but people complaining on Facebook about it without actually reaching out to the town. So we try, we try to keep an eye on that too. So anytime something like that comes up, our town gets out on it.
Thanks, Rob. We're going to go Bob and then Pat.
Yeah. So and Tyler and the team, you know, online, you can go up and see there is a road plan. Actually Kurt Miller started a long time ago. And keeping up with roads in any town, any big city is something you have to do on a steady, you know, basis so that you can keep up with the changes. When Kurt Miller put that plan together many years ago, we've been working towards that plan to work on all the roads within town. So every year we're looking at that budget and to see which roads are in different grade, you know, state grades, basically, and whether they're good to bad. And we make that decision of what we're going to do year over year. And, and, and that goes with sidewalks as well. So we have to do that with not just the roads, but the sidewalks. So you can imagine Seymour is not a very big town surface area wise and, but we have to every year plan for X million dollars just to repair those roads to keep them, keep them fresh every year. So.
Pat?
Just, we work in conjunction with our town engineer and as two of the other selectmen have stated, we've just gone through, you know, what our plans for road, road asphalting and sidewalk improvements will be for this year. Those plans are, you know, it's public information. You, you can readily get those. Okay. Give Rory a call. I'm sure he can point you in the right direction, so on and so forth. But there are concrete plans in place and again, we work in conjunction with our town engineer. Try to prioritize things as best we can. But ultimately, like anything else, it boils down to dollars and cents. So we do have a budgetary constraints.
Thank you, Pat. And just Tyler, just, does anybody else want to chime in on that? Cause I think I could wrap it up. The potholes and then Chris can make his, his comment. He's been waiting patiently. Tyler, just so you're aware of, you know, every winter, you know, we live in New England, we're going to have potholes. Things are going to happen. Things, the frost refreeze, you know, the frost refreeze, it's, it wreaks havoc on, on the roads. As you know, across New England. So we're a small community, but we do have a really good plan in place. We have an excellent public works department. We have a great leader there. We have people who work very hard in our department. They're constantly picking litter, fixing potholes, cutting grass when it's in season. Keeping our fields looking pristine. We're, we're constantly getting compliments regarding our fields from out of town. Folks who come and, and compete against us. So we do have some potholes in town. That's a natural thing that's going to happen in New England. So within a, within time, they will get filled and we'll take care of it. That it's always done. We're, we're very proud of our public works department. So like Mr. Lombardi and Mr. Finley and Mr. Van Egan and others have commented. If you, if somebody is complaining about a pothole, they need to report it to us where it is. And it gets put on a list and it gets taken care of. So we hope we've answered your question. Maybe there's a little more comprehensive than you wanted, but we just want to make sure we give you guys really informed answers. You're, you're taking your time tonight to be with us and, and we appreciate that. So. Chris, did you want to make a comment on, on the school?
I wanted to make one last comment. And you asked, have brought up some very noble goals, the student lounge, the locker rooms. I know as a former athlete myself, how demoralizing a bad locker room can be. But a lot of the changes you're requesting make money. And a lot of answers to a lot of issues today have been dollars and cents, dollars and cents. Do we have it in the budget? Staffing for it. Those things do cost money and permanent changes to the building cost money to fund. And in this town, I'm not sure if you're aware, the education, both budgets are separate. The education budget and the main town budget are separate and they go in front of a referendum. So what that means is that the town votes on the budget as to whether or not they support it or they're against it. And it's been difficult in the past, less so lately. But it's been difficult in the past to get the education budget through because we ask people to increase funds for the schools that might not have a stake in the schools anymore, or might be on a fixed income. Have you all considered more grassroots methods of trying to approve increases to the budget? That's kind of a rhetorical question. I don't need an answer on that. But if you're serious about bringing these changes forward that you want to see for your school, you might have to convince more than just the board members on the Board of Education who are cognizant of the budget or board members on the Board of Selectmen. You can submit letters to editors. You can make other campaigns to try to get your voice heard, not just by people on the boards, but the town as well, because in this town, we have a public say in the budget and we're asking taxpayers to fund.
Chris, your sound's going in. Can't hear you. Nothing. Well, guys, since Selectman Bowman is having some technical difficulties, is there anybody else who has any, any final questions? Ms. Pullman?
I just thought, so I'm Kayla and I just wanted to kind of say that if you guys have any suggestions for us, we're definitely open. You guys know the town better than us from kind of what needs to be done and the work, I think in some ways. So definitely we're open to suggestions and if not now, if you, you can get in touch with Ms. Pino or even Zach or one of us. And I just wanted to put that out there that we want to help you guys too.
Great, great to hear. And Rory Burke is your, is your person to get in touch with and vice versa. I'm sure Rory would be happy to do that, facilitate those communications. And, you know, we, we get back to, to people who are interested in helping us. And of course we're going to help you guys. You're our students in our town. So whatever we can do. Pat, did you have a comment?
No.
No? Okay. So are we, do we have any other questions or comments from student council before we move on to our next agenda item?
Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. Keep up the good work. Go forward.
Keep it up, guys.
Thank you to Zach and, and the other members of his council, to everybody, Zach, Kelty, Kayla, Tyler, Michael and Ms. Pino for, for joining us. And oh, and Mr. Patel, thank you so much. And thank you to you all. And we appreciate it. And it was a great conversation. And, you know, we'll be in touch and you'll be in touch with us and we like to follow up.
Great. Thank you again for inviting us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Our pleasure. Have a good night, guys. If you want to stay on and listen, you can stay on and listen. I don't know, just, just stay on mute. We're going to continue with our meeting. If you want to leave and do your homework or relax. By all means, we won't take any offense. It was great seeing all of you tonight.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Take care.
Thanks. Okay. Um, so Brian, I just want to ask you, what, what did we do exactly with the agenda item discussion and take possible action regarding the mailbox? That's 13 J Lane. Is that individual still, hasn't shown up? Is that true, Rory?
Yeah. Selectman Bruno, we, we passed over that item. So you can go back to it, assuming someone is there on that.
That, that resident is a firefighter. So I imagine they may be tied up at the moment.
Okay.
And, and.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have that person waiting after they were late and we didn't torture them and make them wait forever.
And on that note, Rob, it actually may have to run as well to do mutual aid for that fire call. So I don't know if it's possible to go out of order for the executive session.
Yeah, I think we should do that then, especially if Rob may have a commitment. Cause the student council piece probably took a little bit longer than we thought. You got to go, Rob?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
No, not, not yet. We may get called to cover Bethany because I think Bethany got called in for mutual aid. So we may go for station coverage, but I'm good for now.
Brian, I'd like to, to Rory's point, I'd like to make a motion to go out of order. And go ahead, Bob, before I do that, go ahead, get up. Can you go on mute? Take your mute off?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay. Just to make it officially. Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to go out of order and go into executive session because of Rob's potential commitment. And we have to leave. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Your motion is to take the. Okay.
Motion was made by Bob and I seconded it.
Right?
And this is to take an item out of order and then we'll make a proper motion to go into executive session after we take the item out of order. Just to make it clear for everyone.
We're voting to take it out of order at this point.
Yes, that's correct. By Bob, second by Pat. Can I have a show of hands? All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five. Chair votes, aye. We got five, five yay, no nays, no abstentions, motion passes. Five zero zero. Okay. So now I'd like to have a motion to go into executive session, please. Motion by Chris, second by Bob, all in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the motion should properly state, the reason going into executive session is to discuss standards, procedures, processes and software regarding the town's computer system, which information is not otherwise available to the public. And the disclosure of which would compromise the security or integrity of the town's information technology system. Further, the members going into executive session will be all members of the Board of Selectmen, Chief of Staff, Mr. Burke and Town Attorney Leclerc.
And Director Rob Dyer.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Dyer, thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay. So Chris?
I make a motion to.
As I stated.
Just say so.
So.
Easy.
Motion by Chris, second by Pat, all in favor?
Knowing, knowing that we're going into executive session at.
Motion passes five zero zero. And we're going to head into executive session at eight 29 PM.
So how we're going to do that, Mr. Chairman, is Rory will be stopping the recording.